Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the zoning board of review meeting to order for Tuesday, June 28th, 2022. Pat, would you call the role, please?
Richard Barnes.
Here.
Judy Lattner. Karen Swederson.
President.
James King.
Here.
Ian Fethlin.
Here.
David Bell.
Here.
John Markey.
Allison.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 24th, 2022 meeting?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So moved. With respect to correspondence this evening, there is a request for a one-year extension in regard to James King. Mr. King, maybe you'd just like to move down for a second?
Yep.
Mr. Fantolino, you are the attorney for the applicant?
I am, yes.
Okay. If you just want to, just two seconds to explain.
Yes, sure. You know, Christian Fantolino, attorney for the applicant, James and Amber King. We're just requesting a one-year extension for the variance that was granted. We're waiting for plywood to come down less than 75 bucks a board, not all prices related, so.
I make a move for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's also correspondence from Mr. Mancini, and I understand that that correspondence, which is dated June 27th, is now superseded by correspondence dated today. Mr. Mancini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Mancini, on behalf of We Dig Investments LLC, this is the application with respect to the redevelopment of the property located at 29 Narra Gansett Avenue. As you recall, the applicant's been before you on several hearings, and the last year we did request a continuance for the purpose of redesigning the building, taking heed to some of the comments that were made from the public. In doing that, we've essentially redesigned the building such that it's completely different than what was previously presented to the board, will not require the applicant to seek or obtain any variances. So I think it's in the best interest of resources and time for the applicant to withdraw that application and resubmit a new application to the planning board and restart the process with a new design and, you know, essentially a brand-new building. So, in essence, we're very grateful for the board for the time, because I know the board spent a lot of time in this. Yes, you can understand the applicant could spend a lot of time, but the process has played out, and hopefully this is a better design and a better building for the town.
Thank you. Good luck.
Do we just ask for a vote to draw?
Well, I think that, I don't know if you need a vote. It's automatic. If you're withdrawing it, it's withdrawn, and it's certainly without prejudice.
This is my first withdrawal, so I don't know if it's a ceremony that takes place or, you know, usually we go to court, so I'm kind of at a loss.
No, I think you're putting it on the record as more than sufficient.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. With respect to new business, there's an application of Alexander and Linda Knowles. Is that ready to proceed? I'm just asking if you're ready.
I'm sorry?
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to the application of Susan and Duncan Pendlebury, is that ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to the application of Laura Carlson, which is an appeal of a zoning enforcement officer, is that ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's start with the first one, the Knowles matter. Yes.
I do. Alexander Knowles. So what do I need to do here? Tell you what I'm after?
Yes, why don't you take your application, go through it, and explain what you're seeking, why you're seeking it.
Okay. So I'm seeking a variance approval for maintaining a two-foot setback on the north side of my garage and replacing that garage with a larger structure that will be approximately 12 feet in width bigger and about four feet higher. The reason is this building that I currently have was from the original house that was on the property years and years ago and slowly deteriorated over time to the extent that I share it mostly with mics these days, and they seem to enjoy everything I put in there, including car wires and other things. So my thought is, rather than maintain that smaller garage that is quite small, to expand it, it will allow me to put cars in there, it'll allow me to do some work in there. I have been building small boats most recently, and I'm enjoying that, but I can move the tools out of the house, and that makes harmony a lot better than running a table saw that echoes through the house. And lastly, it's another place for storage. There's no, absolutely no incentive for me to replace that garage. It's just a small, useless space in many ways. So I'm saying, if I'm going to do something, I might as well make it a little bit bigger and make it more useful. There is an issue now, and I think you see maybe the pictures of this, but as you go to that garage, it's the original driveway from the house, and that driveway runs directly into the garage. The idea would be, if I moved it that eight feet, then the driveway no longer runs into the garage, it misses it. And that means then, okay, I'm going to have to alter the driveway. And you look at the end of the road, the driveway that's there, and you'll see there are trees quite large that are, would be in the way of moving the garage over eight feet, making the access there, such that then I'm knocking down probably a 30- or 40-foot tree, and I thought, well...
How many of those trees do you think you'd have to knock down?
At least one, and depending, maybe another one, but be that as it may. And then also moving the driveway, by the way, or creating a big apron of some sort to allow you to make the turn from the old driveway into the new garage. So, in effect, that's the story. It's a little higher, four feet higher, well within, I believe, the code. Size-wise, it doesn't pick up any space issue because it's well-sized for the property. It's really that one property line that it runs next to. That's the...
So the garage is already two feet from the property line?
Correct.
When 10 feet is required?
Correct.
And that two feet will remain?
Yes, that's my plan.
The extension is put on the other side, correct?
Right, yes. The whole extension inside, well, the whole extension is limited to that one south wall, moving it over, and it will move into my property.
Right.
And there will be no movement on the other dimension.
So the side, oh, I thought it was the side where the two-foot marker is, was 12 feet, and you're going to make that side 24? No, it's going this way.
It's going all into my property, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that side is just remaining?
Just leaving, yeah, leaving that same property line, yeah.
Are you knocking that down and building a new one, or just adding?
Yeah, yeah. Put a new slab in of some, you know, cement to...
Right. And to move it over to the 10 feet, then you would have to move a good portion of the driveway, and in moving a good portion of the driveway, you would also lose some of the tree coverage.
Exactly, right, yeah, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Maybe I'm going to get this wrong, but do you have another garage also?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Two-car garage.
A two-car garage, and now you want to build another?
Well, I don't, yeah, I guess that's what you're saying, or replace an existing garage?
Right.
Which serves not so much as a garage, but it serves now for some storage, and of course, it's rat-infested, so the storage space is kind of useless. And it certainly could not, well, this is another issue, but it could not accommodate my avocation of boat building and using tools.
Do you also have other sheds or anything in the back? It looks like there's a couple of sheds back there also.
I'm sorry, a couple of?
Sheds? Do you have a couple of other...
Oh, sheds?
Yes.
Nope, nope.
Okay, I guess...
There was a shed there, why, I'm not sure, in the middle of the backyard, side yard, and it was ridiculous, so it was maybe you could call it a potty shed or something like that. I moved that, that was useless.
So you have a two-car garage, and you also want to build another building that is, is it going to be like a two-car garage also?
It, well, it'll have one single entry, one door. I'm not planning on having some grandiose two-car garage there, because, to be honest, I have two cars, and they fit in the garage we have now. But I thought, well, rather than make a building that is like a house with no, like, car entry, I didn't see any point in that. I said, if I'm going to move boats in and out of there, why not have a door that you can move boats in and out of?
And you're going four feet up because?
Yeah.
Why?
Because it looks, if you moved that thing over 12 feet, you'd have a roof that was like that, first of all, it would look kind of silly, I think.
So for aesthetics?
And, pardon me?
For aesthetics?
It's aesthetics, and depending, it could give me some space up top, and probably will, to store things.
So is there a second level?
So I have a little extra room to store.
Is there a second level to it, then?
A second level, that's not for sure, but yes, a second level with a walk, you know, like a ladder or something to go up, so you could put up whatever you wanted to store up there.
I also noticed in the pictures that there were a lot of trees on this north side. Would any of those trees need to be taken down?
Not the way I'm planning it today. If I can't move it back, probably won't do it anyway then, but you would have to take out that last big tree for sure.
Yep. Okay.
And your lot is just under two acres?
Pardon me?
Your lot is just under two acres.
Yeah, yeah, of which I control about a third of it. Be that as it may.
Does anyone else have any questions?
What do you have, a second driveway, then, to get to the other part?
Yeah, there's a second. See, it's the original driveway for that house. The folks who built it, I found out after the fact, built it to sell it and left some stuff, for good or for bad, including the driveway and that little old garage, when they built the property. So, thank you.
Do you have any other witnesses?
Pardon me?
Do you have any other witnesses?
No.
Okay.
Have you spoken to the O'Neills?
Yes.
And they're on board with this?
Yes.
I'm right here.
Okay.
We'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the application? Or does anybody have questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll speak in favor.
Okay.
I do. Pete Gaynor, 100 Southwest Ave., so I'm next to...
How do you spell your last name?
G-A-Y-N-O-R.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
So I'm not on a butter, but I live on the same side between 100 Mr. O'Neill and the Knowles. So I support the project, as indicated by Mr. Knowles, it's an old, decrepit garage that needs to be replaced, so I'm in favor for the project.
You're the person that hired Mr. Sakosio, the architect?
No.
No. But you did come of course a few months ago?
A year ago.
A year ago.
Yes.
You used to work for Cranston?
A couple of different places.
Thank you, Mr. Gaynor. I'm sorry, is it Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah.
I do. Michael O'Neill.
My name is...
Michael.
No.
Paul Alasie.
And he...
Where do you live, Mr. O'Neill?
How you doing tonight?
Go ahead.
Just...
Where do you live?
I live at 104 Southwest Ave., I'm near Butter, as mentioned in the thing. The house that Mr. Gaynor lived in, the house I grew up in, 1983, we got an approval to put a variance and build a home where I am now, '84 and '85. That garage has been there the whole time. I play tennis against when I was a kid. My only concern, if we're going to do this, when they moved the home years ago down the street, they made a mess of my yard and this and that, my main concern is, there's no way they can work on this house 100% of the time without being on my property. I mean, I have a picture just from my deck, remember? Would you like to see it?
No, I know where you live, and I know what he's talking about.
Okay, so I mean, my own concern is, if it's going forward, I just want to make sure that my property is taken care of, and anything that they do that would, getting onto my property, is taken care of.
All right, well, that's not an issue for us.
Okay.
That's an issue between the two of you and the building inspector, and that, if I understand correctly, other than the roof line, most of the work will be away from your property, correct?
Most of it, I mean, I imagine the whole north side, as they said, two feet, we used to kid growing up, when it rained off Sam's roof, it hit our land.
So if any of the workers feel that they need to come on your property?
Right.
That's an issue that would have to be discussed with you, otherwise they'd be trespassing.
All right, and then, anyway, there's a big tree that's hanging over the thing at the present moment, too, so what's going to happen with that as well?
A big tree hanging where?
Hanging over the garage. Over the west side of the garage.
Is any portion of that tree on your property?
It is on both properties, the tree. The tree's base and his, but it covers both properties.
The roots are on his property?
Correct.
Okay. You ought to look at the law in Rhode Island about what you can and cannot cut down.
I have, yes.
Okay, I'm not going to give you advice on what you can or can't do.
No, I'm not questioning, I'm just saying, it's like, what I'm looking at, to me, I just want to make sure that my property is intent and intact afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And that's really not an issue for us, that's an issue between you and your neighbor.
Right.
You consult an attorney, I think, if you know your respective rights.
Well, I came down here and talked to Ms. Westhall before he ended up, she said, "It's good to show up, let him know what you're looking for, and make sure that this information is in there."
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in regard to this application? Thank you. Okay, we'll take it under advisement.
Mr. Chairman, could I have just one clarification?
Sure.
Exhibit 3A, what is the date on that?
Pardon?
Exhibit 3A.
Very confusing. I am...
Thank you. I thought it was just me.
Did I miss label something?
Look, it has no date, so it's confusing. It looks like you're going to be tearing down and demolishing an old house.
I couldn't understand your exhibit 3A either.
Oh, yes, you know what? That is the original plan of the people who replaced the house that was there, and the only reason I use it is because I had that.
You had it, okay, thank you.
I had that graph.
Thank you.
I have the same question.
That's right, the shed.
No, that is sort of...
Thank you. The next matter is the Pendlebury matter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, you have to be sworn in.
Sorry. Duncan, D-U-N-C-A-N, Pendlebury, P-E-N-D-L-E-B-U-R-Y. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here, my wife, Susan, and I, the applicants. We have a garage that is the original working drawings, which we did not build, we bought the property with the garage on it. The garage in the original drawings that were permitted here in town set the garage at 40 feet from the right-of-way. And when we decided that we would go forward with applying to do an accessory family dwelling unit, we had the property surveyed, and we needed survey to submit to D E M for septic work and so on. We did that, and we found that the garage was, in fact, 38.5 feet from the right-of-way. So because of the change of use, the garage being rehabilitated to be an accessory family dwelling unit, we are asking for relief on the missing one and a half feet.
Is that the only reason you are before us?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When you convert a building to an accessory family dwelling, it has to conform to principal structure setbacks, not the accessory structure setbacks.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Who's going to be living in it?
My stepson, my wife's son, Jeremy Thomas. He's already signed the application and so on, so...
Any other questions? Thank you. Do you have any other witnesses?
No.
Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application or has questions concerning the application? Thank you, Mr. Gaynor. We're going to hear one more matter, and then we're going to pick all three and have a discussion concerning them. Okay. You're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board, my name is Mark Liberati, and I'm here on the appeal of Laura Carlson. This is a really ordinance interpretation case. The building official has made a determination that a dog grooming salon is not a permitted use and therefore refused Ms. Carlson a permit to operate a dog grooming salon. Ms. Carlson proposes to operate in the space between McQuade's Market and the pizza place on the corner, which used to be the laundromat. She spent several months now negotiating with Mr. McQuade to provide this space to her, and my legal argument is quite simply that the category, which is most relevant to this, is states as follows: These are allowed uses in a CD zone. By the way, this is a CD zone. Beautician, barber, shoe repair, and similar services. So, you know, we're not, she's not a beautician of people, she's not a barber of people, certainly not a shoe repair business, but we, but the argument, again, is that the language in that category was intended to be broader than just the services listed, because it does say "and" similar services. And here the argument is that a dog grooming salon is a similar service to a beautician or a barber. You know, I'm not going to repeat everything in my memorandum, which I know that you've received, that basically addresses the fact that this is one of, I think, the only provision in the code, the zoning code, that has this kind of broad language of adding the language quote "in similar services." And I also added some definitions from dictionaries that refers to, you know, dealing with hair and the like, but it's not particularly limited to human beings only. So with that, I mean, it's strictly a legal argument, it's a question of ordinance interpretation, and I would like Ms. Carlson to describe for you what her operation would look like.
Thanks, Carlson.
Laura Carlson.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks, Mark. So the grooming shop would be in the space that was the old laundromat between McQuade's and the pizza place, that's been vacant, I think, for almost three years now. And the operation of the shop is a fear-free grooming shop where one dog is with one groomer at a time. So the dogs come in, they go straight to the tub, they go onto the table, they get groomed, and then they get picked up by their owner or their caregiver, and they go home. So there's no dayboarding, there's no kenneling, there's very little noise, except for the dryers, and it's a very simple, clean, and efficient operation. And I think we desperately need one on the island. People here have to leave the island to have their dogs groomed, or they have to use the services of a mobile groomer, which can be cost prohibitive to people who are on a fixed income. And people on the island, as they lose mobility or they get older, it's difficult for them to wrestle their big dogs into tubs, so they'll have a place to go at a lower cost in a local salon to get their dog's needs met. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
How many groomers are you thinking of having in there?
Initially, it would be me. The space is only 600 square feet, so it's pretty tight. I may be able to afford a bather at some point, so it'd be myself and a bather, and if we do really well, we might add another table. But we can't, we can't really have more than two groomers in the shop, it's just too small.
We have a lot of water restrictions, as I'm sure you know, because of our reservoir and... What are you doing to conserve?
So the fixtures that we have in the shop I apprenticed in are water conservation fixtures, so that we wet the dog down, we turn the water off, we shampoo the dog, scrub it up, and then turn the water on to rinse. So we try to use as little water as possible. And it was a laundromat before, so I'm assuming they use way more water than we'll use, and we'll use less than the local hair salons.
What is your ultimate goal? How many people would you like to ultimately employ?
I'd love to have two groomers and a bather. That's the most efficient way to run a shop. That way you only have, the maximum amount of dogs in the shop is two, one on each table and one in the tub. Is anyone else?
One in each table and...
Sorry, three total.
Three dogs at the same time?
No. We have, we have two tables, so one on each table and one in the tub, and that's rare. That's when you're, that's when you're busy in the middle of the day.
If I'm not mistaken, there's been dog groomers in Jamestown before. Do you know if that's the case?
I believe that is the case. I put a post up on Facebook today asking for support for tonight, and someone mentioned there was one up until 1996 on Lawn Avenue, and I don't know if that was a commercial space or they did it out of their house, but I'm pretty sure someone at some point has done dog grooming on the island before. I don't have the proof.
Have you done this before?
Have I done this before? My entire career is about animal health and welfare, so I've worked for D E M, I've worked for American Humane, and I've been apprenticing for two years at Joyful Grooming in Exeter. That is my friend Renee, and she's the president of the Rhode Island Professional Pet Groomers Association, so I've learned from the very best.
So this is your first venture of doing it yourself?
Doing it myself, correct.
If I may, I first learned of this issue approximately three weeks ago, and at that point I was very, very concerned that we do in fact need pet grooming in Jamestown. And I looked at the zoning ordinance, and I actually was quite surprised, and I tried to do everything I could in my mind to see if you would fit into a category. And I first started with beauticians, barbers, shoe repair, and similar services. So I went to Rhode Island General Laws, and I looked at beauticians, barbers, shoe repair, and similar services in the licensing statute in Rhode Island. And similar services to beauticians are cosmeticians, manicures, and estheticians, not dog grooming. Similar services to shoe repair are leather makers, belts, leather sandals, leather satchels, and handbags. So I gave up on that idea. Then I decided I'm going to try other ideas. First I went to see what is a beauty salon, and I looked up every definition, and every definition came up with a similar, similar language. An establishment dealing with... And I first started with beauticians, barbers, shoe repair, and similar services. So I went to Rhode Island General Laws, and I looked at beauticians, barbers, shoe repair, and similar services in the licensing statute in Rhode Island. And similar services to beauticians are cosmeticians, manicures, and estheticians, not dog grooming. Similar services to shoe repair are leather makers, belts, leather sandals, leather satchels, and handbags. So I gave up on that idea. Then I decided I'm going to try other ideas. First I went to see, what is a beauty salon? And I looked up every definition, and every definition came up with a similar language. An establishment dealing with cosmetic treatment for men and women. I tried to find a definition that was not men and women, and I could not. It's called an establishment where hairdressing, facials, and manicures are done. And Rhode Island General Laws five dash ten dash one provides, a hairdresser is any person who cuts or treats the scalp of any person. And I kept coming back to the same problem. So at that point, I looked, I decided that I was going to look at every single definition of dog grooming in every single city or town. And just about every single city or town in the state of Rhode Island has dog grooming. And then I became concerned, because if we were to grant your appeal, you would be a Y in a, you would be a permitted use in a C D zone. Almost every city or town that allows dog grooming is an S, not a P, not a permitted use, but a use that requires a special use permit where zoning board could set conditions. And then I found a case that was quite applicable, and it's called Clinton versus Portsmouth Zoning Board of Review. A woman who already had a dog clinic, I mean, a dog grooming place, was seeking a special use permit in Portsmouth to allow a grooming salon in an existing pet store. And the Portsmouth case granted the application, but set a series of nine conditions. If we were to grant your appeal, there would be zero conditions. And from this day forward, dog grooming in Jamestown would not be under a special use permit. It would be a permitted use. And in that particular case, the Portsmouth Zoning Board of Review found the following conditions. One, maximum of twelve to fifteen dogs a day. Two, a maximum of three to four dogs at a time. Three, it could not be a daycare facility. Four, dogs would not be allowed outside. Five, animal waste must be put into steel containers and taken to the dump, not in the dumpster. Six, eight to four, Mondays through Saturday. Seven, no dog kennel. Eight, no walking. Nine, grooming restricted to cats and dogs, no other animals. So that's the problem we were faced with. So I made a suggestion. I said, "Let's see if we can have a meeting." And we had a meeting approximately two and a half, three weeks ago, right here. And I brought with me a definition. I took all the definitions that I could find from South Kingston, Tiverton, Exeter, Portsmouth, Marigansett, and I came up with a definition of dog grooming. And that definition, at this meeting, was myself, Mr. Moore, who's the zoning official, Lisa Brier, the planning, head of the planning department, Mike Swistak, chairman of the planning commission. And on the telephone with us was a legal counsel. And we discussed that we wanted to move as quickly as possible to get a definition of pet grooming onto the zoning ordinance. And it was written up by the end of that day. It was typed up. The next morning, it was given to the town council. And I understand it was before the town council last week. And was it presented to the town council on June twenty-first?
Yes.
And I understand that it may go before the planning commission for review and recommendation on July sixth?
Yes, I believe it's the fifth or the sixth.
And then it would be before the town council for full hearing and vote on August twenty-second. And if it's granted, you would be before us on September twenty-second.
September twenty-second or August twenty-second?
We're doing this as fast as reasonably possible.
Can I ask when the August meeting is?
Pardon?
When is the August meeting of the zoning board?
No, no. The town council would vote final passage on August twenty-second. And the next morning, you would file your application, and you would be on before us.
Oh, okay. I didn't see what you said.
I'm not opposed to this, but I don't think we can do this in the way you're seeking because of the special use, because almost every city and town has it as a special use permit. And if we granted your request, it would be as a permitted use, and we would have no, there would be no conditions. Those are my thoughts. Anyone else?
I feel like since you've done such thorough research, we have to sort of respect what you have said, and that this timetable seems very fair.
Oh, and just so you know, the definition that we came up with is as follows. An establishment where domestic pets parentheses, dogs and cats close parentheses, are groomed and washed, and may include the ancillary sale of products related to the service, but does not include any associated kennel, overnight accommodations, obedience training, pet walking, or pet food sales. Now, the pet food sales I included because they're already too, because McQuade's would probably break your neck if you started selling pet food. So some communities did allow sale of pet foods, other communities did not. But so I put in this because I didn't think McQuade's would even allow it, for you to sell pet food.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with your reasoning. I just break with you on the one point. I haven't decided whether I would be in favor of this or not until I hear all the testimonials.
Okay.
But in any event, I think they would have to, they'd have to withdraw this application and submit a new one, because it would have to be filed under a special use permit, if that goes through correctly. We couldn't just continue this.
Yes, we could. What I'd like to do, if it looks like the board is not inclined to approve this appeal tonight, is continue this. Is the August meeting of the zoning board after the town council?
It's the twenty-third, I know that. It's August twenty-third.
So I think the town council meeting is August twenty-second. And the reason, not that I, this is the only reason. There is the possibility, however remote, that the town council says, "You know what? I don't know that we really need special use permits. We may just allow it." So given that that's a possibility, in order just not to see this evaporate, could we just continue this until the twenty-third to see what the town council does?
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Now, the problem you may be faced with would be if the town council does pass it just as is, then you would have to very quickly come up with, well, amend your application to seek a special use permit, but you're already on the calendar then for September.
Right.
You're really ahead of the game.
Yeah, we've got to pay attention to the filing deadline for September.
Right, got it.
So rather than, well, I guess what we'll do is rather than deny your appeal, we'll simply going to continue the matter to the August date.
I would appreciate that.
August or September?
No, August. And that may end up being a control date or not.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to continue to the August twenty-third date.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to go back, and we're going to have a discussion concerning the Knowles matter. Start from left to right. Any issues concerning the Knowles matter?
The Knowles matter, none.
Anybody else?
No, I would just hope that there would be an agreement with the people next door as to the protection of their property.
Well, again.
But that's not before us.
That's not before us.
But I would recommend that.
Who would like to draft the Knowles opinion?
I'll do that.
Okay.
Just, do you have the phone?
Yes.
I was going to have Dean York, but he's not here.
Oh, let me have the other one back. The next matter is Pendleberry. Any discussion concerning Pendleberry?
I just want to say, when I looked this over, I said, "So they're coming before us because they have a foot and a half that they're asking for." When they bought the property and they thought it was already forty feet. So my feeling is, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Would you like to write it up?
Not really.
Okay.
Well, it is honesty.
With your help, maybe.
I did that last time.
I know.
Mr. King, would you like to do that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we take a ten-minute recess? I'd like to call a meeting to order. Is there a motion in regard to the Knowles matter?
Yes, I move that we grant the request of Alexander and Linda Knowles, whose property is located at one oh eight Southwest Ave and further identifies as Accessory Plant Nine, Lot twenty-six, for a variance from Article Three, Section eighty-two dash three oh two, Table three dash two, District Dimensional Regulations in Section eighty-two dash six oh five slash six oh six and eighty-two dash seven oh five to replace an existing outbuilding that would utilize the same north side setback of two feet, where ten is required, ten feet is required. The new structure will increase the square footage from two sixty-four square feet to five hundred and twenty-eight square feet. The board has determined, oh, do I have a second?
Second, sir.
The board has determined that the applicant does satisfy the requirements of Article Six, Section six hundred. The project must be constructed in strict accordance with the site and building plans duly approved by this board. The motion is based on the following findings and facts. Said property is located in an R twenty zone that contains eighty-seven thousand, eighty-seven thousand seven hundred square feet. The applicant proposes to increase the square footage of a non-conforming structure from two sixty-four square feet to five hundred and twenty-eight. The structure will be built to add twelve feet to the south side. The north side of the structure is currently two feet from the side setback, where ten feet is required. The structure will be four feet higher than is currently. If this structure was moved, the additional eight feet more off the north side, it would not be in line with the current driveway. It would require cutting down at least one mature tree. The building is built higher for aesthetic reasons. Two people testified in favor of the applicant and none against.
Although the two people did have concerns.
Two people did have concerns. One person had concerns.
Mr. O'Neill.
One person, Mr. O'Neill, had concerns regarding workers on his property during construction. Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion regarding the Pendleberry matter?
I move that we grant the request of Susan and Duncan Pendleberry, whose property is located at fifty-six Wright Lane and further identified as Accessory Plant Four, Lot one thirty-four, for variance from Article Three, Section eighty-two dash three oh two, Table three dash two, District Dimensional Regulations, to thirty-eight point five feet. Front yard from existing building where forty feet is required of the extension of existing accessory structure as per eighty-two dash six oh five, six oh six, and eighty-two dash seven oh five. The board has determined that this application does satisfy the requirements of Article Six, Section six hundred, six oh six, and Section six oh seven, P R F two. It's various, it's granted with the following conditions. This project must be constructed in a strict accordance with the site and building plans duly approved by this board. This motion is also based upon the following findings and facts. Said property is located in the R eighty zone that contains eighty thousand seventy-four square feet. Two, accessory structure will be changed to an accessory family dwelling unit. Three, there were no objectors. Before this stepson is the registered dweller of the accessory family dwelling.
Is there a second?
Second.
So are there any modifications or suggestions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any further issue before us tonight?
No, I move to Jern. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I'm giving it to you right now.